We'll call the meeting to order. This time I'd like to welcome all guests and dignitaries here tonight. We appreciate the fact that the county commissioners are here with us tonight. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Swanger to take the floor. He requested this meeting, and so I will turn it over to Mr. Swanger.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Francis?
No, Mark.
The issues of school safety was brought to the forefront by the tragic events at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. Shortly following that tragedy, I requested a meeting with Dr. Garrett to discuss plans going forward. The school system had already had meetings with law enforcement officials, and I believed that a coordinated plan for school safety was necessary. At that meeting, attended by Vice Chairman Kirk Patrick, County Manager Marty Stamey, Finance Director Julia Davis, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, and others, we discussed possible solutions and remedies. At that meeting, I made it clear that school system requests for funds for SROs and physical security upgrades would be very expensive and would require a tax increase, as the county simply did not have the necessary revenue. A few days ago, the school system requested eight new employees at a cost of $500,000 and $410,000 for physical security upgrades, a total of $910,000. That is why we are here, to discuss this request and to have public input. This request would require up to a two-cent property tax increase if fully funded. We'd like to hear from members of the public that are present, a rather informal dialogue, I would hope. We've got representatives, I believe, from every law enforcement agency in the county present, as well as county and school system staff. And several of our board members are present. I would mention that Commissioner Sorrells and School Board Member Morris will have to leave about 6:30, about a half hour from now, because of conflicts that they have other commitments, college graduations and so forth. So I guess we'll just ask anyone who's interested in addressing this group about this matter, just step up to the microphone, identify yourself, and tell us what you think.
Don't be shy.
Hello. I'm Susan Savage. I'm principal at Hazelwood Elementary, and I have a couple of people from my staff. We hear in the news so much about children in crisis, and our proactive nature at Hazelwood is to provide our students, parents, and teachers with skills and strategies which will enable them to appropriately solve issues important to them. We have made several improvements to provide safety and security for our students, and our mindset at Hazelwood is always to do the best that we can, and we feel that there is more that we can do for our children in the area of social and emotional development. The economic situation of our nation and our community has been, and still is, a challenge for schools for several reasons. Families in our area have been faced with job loss due to factory closings, lower-paying jobs, and a decline in tourism, which affects seasonal employment. These stressful situations affect the children of these families and can affect their ability to perform in school. Educators are constantly being asked to do more with less funding. This has greatly affected our workforce in the area of a full-time guidance counselor. While this is a challenge, at Hazelwood, we dug deeper and we explored alternative ways to meet the needs of our students. We have begun the implementation of the Leader and Me program that equips our students with strategies to deal with situations that they will face as 21st century children. However, that alone is not enough to meet the specific and individual needs of our students. Our financial challenges have prevented us from having a full-time guidance counselor at Hazelwood, which we have long felt would support our children in their social and emotional growth. It is physically impossible for our counselor to meet the needs of almost 500 students. We want and need to address our students' needs now. There are times when I have had to give students OSS. However, these are the students that need to be at school, and they need to be there with the stability and a guidance counselor's support. It is our hope that our school, with the help of a full-time guidance counselor, could better support our children in making good choices that will keep them in school. When we have students in crisis, it isn't always the day that our counselor is on our campus. There have been times when a student has had to wait four or more days before seeing our counselor. Building a relationship is key. With a school our size, it is extremely difficult for this counselor when she is only part-time. She needs to be on our campus regularly so that students have an opportunity to get to know her and feel comfortable about sharing their problems and concerns. In many recent school disasters, it came to light that there were mental health issues that were not met by our students, and at that point, it was too late to try to help. The saddest two words in the English language are "too late," and I don't want to have to say that to my parents.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Rogers, and I'm currently a third-grade teacher at Hazelwood Elementary. I'm here tonight to speak to you about something that means a lot to not only me, but to many other teachers and colleagues that I work with. I'm here to speak on behalf of all of our school counselors in our district and help you see the great need that we have for this kind of support staff. It's been a long day. And what an asset they are to our school's overall safety. From the moment I began my studies to earn my degree to be a teacher, we were taught about basic needs of students. My professors and other educational colleagues always drove home the message, the student's basic needs must be met before true learning can occur. What are these basic needs? Although many of you already know they are food, clothing, shelter, but most importantly, love and belonging and security. Some of these are met through achievement and recognition in our classrooms and through hard work and the opportunities we give our students. However, many of these basic needs, we need to support in truly helping the child to go through the obstacles that stand in their way of true learning and growth. As teachers, we know that when children come into our classrooms with deficits and any of the basic five needs, we must first help them with those needs before any true learning can occur. But sadly, our classrooms are being overrun with students without these needs being met at home. They come to school looking for us to help, and as much as we, their teachers, want to help, in the end, we are the ones that need the help. With ever-increasing requirements of teachers and a continual growth in our curriculum expectations, we simply do not have the time or resources to help meet the always-increasing demand. This is where our school counselors come in. The help that we and our students so desperately need comes from our school counselors. However, the student-to-counselor ratio grows exponentially each year, with counselors being pulled in many different directions and with them being spread thin across students and schools. Their help multiplies our ability to meet the needs of our students and divides the negative effect this lack of basic needs has on our ability to teach our students, as we are being required and truly long to do. Although with the needs, along with the needs just mentioned, our society continues to move into a place where these needs are ever-present. Although we hear about the issues in the news, we still tend to disconnect how often they affect our students in schools. Sometimes, and more often than not, those people and happenings in the news are directly affecting our students. But we don't always see the fallout of each news story, and many times, sadly, we forget about them as soon as we've heard them. But these happenings are affecting our kids, and we have to have the resources, like school counselors and SROs, to help with the fallout that we never see. Bullying has been at the forefront of the news in recent days, and we have seen the effects of how not dealing with this issue as often as we like has spawned so many sad incidents that should have and could have possibly been helped, if only we had a school counselor full-time to meet the need. In the end, it's simple, really. If we want different results, we must have change. If we want more students to succeed, give us the help we need in helping them meet their basic needs by giving us more counselors who aren't so spread thin. If we want our students to grow up knowing how to deal with social issues, and be productive members of our society, and be leaders in our community, then give us more counselors to help us work hand-in-hand to build these skills in our students. We need them. We need our school counselors now more than ever.
My name is Nicole Connor, and I'm the school counselor for not one but two schools in our community, Riverbend and Hazelwood Elementary. I have a combined caseload of approximately 700 students that I currently serve. I struggle every day with juggling the needs of, I'm sorry, it's very personal to me, with juggling the needs of two different schools with two very different populations and sets of needs. On a typical day, I arrive at my designated school for the day, ready to attack the problems I know I need to handle, only to receive an email or phone call from my other school with a pressing matter that can't be ignored. I then have to weigh which pressing need is most pressing, and often have to turn kids away at my door. Many nights, I'm kept awake, wondering about the choices I've made during the day. I deal with the unexpected on a regular basis. For example, this year, eight of my students lost a parent during a three-month span, not to mention other very serious situations involving the health, safety, or general well-being of our students. Time is limited, and time is what a child needs when they're grieving the loss of a parent, or the loss of a home, or the loss of their parent's job. How can we expect a child to sit in a classroom and learn without offering the needed support in these situations? I often also feel helpless in my ability to be effective in the area of bullying. And yes, as we all know, even in our small community, bullying is an ever-growing problem. We know victimized youth are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, and poor school adjustment. We also know that school counselors can and do play a pivotal role in helping target and eliminate bullying in our schools. Sadly, being pulled between two schools causes me to continually fall short in providing my students what they truly need in regards to bullying. To get to the point, one in seven students in grades kindergarten through 12 is either a bully or a victim of bullying, and thousands of children miss school every day due to this issue. Revenge is cited as the strongest motivation for school shootings. One out of every 10 students who drops out of school does so because of repeated bullying. And the most distressing and heart-wrenching statistic for me is the fact that bullying is a leading factor in suicide among kids 11 to 16 years old. And yes, we have 11-year-olds in elementary school. My desire is that our children not be a statistic, so I come to work every day passionate about my job. However, I also leave many days feeling very frustrated, overwhelmed, and disappointed about the support I'm able to provide to both students and teachers. I respectfully ask that you consider the gravity of the issues facing our community's children today and provide them with all the resources, including school counselors, and yes, school resource officers as well, that they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Good evening, commissioners and board members. My name is Jim Belith. I'm a resident of Maggie Valley, and I'm here tonight in support of the SRO program. I've reached out to a number of people in the community that I know, and just this morning, I hunted with a friend of mine who taught for 18 years in South Florida. And during that period of time in South Florida, he was stabbed seven times and shot once. And this issue with SROs in our schools in the wake of Sandy Hook, and in his words, is something we can't afford not to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Brad Melton. Coming at this from two angles. I'm not only a parent of a child in the school system here already, but another one who will be within a couple of years. I'm also a paramedic here with Haywood County and work at emergency services. And I want to start off by saying I do feel that our kids are safe in our schools right now, but there's nothing that we can do to completely 100% protect them at all times. But I think there are steps within reason that we can take, and the school resource officer at each school, I think is one of those steps that we need to look at and strongly consider. Maybe also having uniform entry and exit policies throughout the school system. I'm sure that's something that's been talked about and being done already. But I just think there's more that can be done and should be done, and we owe it to our kids and to our staff members to do that.
Thank you. Does any of the staff or law enforcement present have anything they'd like to say? Any members of either board, anything they would like to say?
This is a quiet bunch.
It is.
Is that going to be it?
I think so. If no one's got anything else to say.
What's the recommendation of school board?
Yeah. What is the recommendations? Well, you passed the request unanimously, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What the school board has requested in our proposed budget to the county commission included, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the four SROs, four guidance counselors, and about $410,000, is that correct? And rough numbers for safety enhancements at our schools, correct, Tracy?
Yeah, the $410,000 is just for the safety portion, but that's included within the total capital plan.
Correct. And that's where our recommendation at this point has been.
Okay. I had mentioned earlier, Kirk, that you and I had attended a meeting with Dr. Garrett and several others, and we talked about the fact that SROs and physical security would be expensive and that it would likely require a tax increase. And that's why, when we talked about it at our last board meeting, which several of the school folks attended, we wanted to bring it to the public and to get input as to what people thought about that. And we announced it on television. There's been a newspaper article about that. I've had very little input. I think I've had three phone calls is all I've had. I don't know if other board members have had much.
Not much.
Kevin, have you had any?
I've had very little. I've had some, the contact I've had, you know, we had a couple of emails today that were negative about doing it. I've had face-to-face conversations with people who have been supportive of it. So, and I'm, you know, I just want to listen to the public and see what they say, see what they recommend. That's kind of where I'm coming from right now. So this is an issue that we just need to listen to the community, let the community guide us on what they think ought to be done.
This requires a community solution, I think. Rhonda?
I've had no phone calls, but I have had some face-to-face contact with people, and they definitely support having the extra SROs and the extra security managers. But like I said, I've had no phone calls. This has just been face-to-face contact.
Do we know where we stand on magic funds, or the state, you know, providing any kind of help on providing the SROs?
I think the funding package I saw was $10 million statewide, which is not going to have a meaningful impact in any county. It's simply not enough money to, when you spread it among 115 schools, districts, to have any meaningful impact. The COPS grants, that's a federal program, and I think they would not be awarded until October, that's the fiscal year for the federal government, and they can only be awarded for brand-new positions. So if SROs were hired and were in place, then that position would not be eligible for grant consideration. And again, it all depends on what kind of a budget is passed by the federal government. You know how that's worked.
What the state passes.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, no matter what, no matter what, you would have to budget as if none of that existed, because you wouldn't know if it was going to exist or not.
That was one of the questions that came to me. I had a phone call today in opposition, but the question was, is a lot about what the status of the grants would be, you know? And I said, well, what we've had to look at is a lot proceed if there was no money whatsoever, because a grant, as you well know, until you receive it, you don't have any guarantee of the funding for that source. The face-to-face contact I've had has been in support of school safety and SROs. I've had mostly in favor of, I've had a few in opposition, too. And the main reason is, is the cost involved and the burden that the taxpayers, and look, I've heard that out in the public. So, I mean, I'm being fair with what I've heard and what I haven't heard. So I've had one phone call, and it was negative, but out in the public as a whole, it's been very supportive of it.
I know that the school board passed this budget request unanimously, but since that time, I've been led to believe that perhaps there's been some reconsideration of that. Does Chuck, you want to address that, or does any other board member want to address it?
I think the issue came when I was talking to our board members about the realization that the responsibility had been put back to us, that it would be a tax increase. And I think that's been the concern. Our board is not comfortable with, is what I read now, and I'm speaking on behalf of what I have heard from other board members in conversations with them, is that the comfort level for asking the public for a tax increase as a school board is not a position we're comfortable with or have any experience with. I'll put it that way. And that's been our concern. We felt like that our request was more conservative than a full-blown nine, 10, 11 SROs. And yes, it would be hard to make a decision on where the SROs go, and we would count on law enforcement to help us with that. But we didn't want to ask for extravagance in it, and we wanted to be very careful and proceed with a, and board members, tell me if I'm wrong, because I'm just one person that interprets feedback, is I've listened to my board members in the last few days. It's been concerned about what's look at a total approach. No one fix will fix everything. We want to look at restricted entry ways, some of the things that we could do that will improve, that will have more than just one year's effect. In other words, something that, infrastructure changes. And I think that's what I was getting feedback from, and our board members, a lot of them are here, but not, some of them are not here. But that's what I'm hearing from our board members, is the comfort level with asking the public directly for a tax increase is a concern of a lot of our board members.
Of course, the only, of course, commissioners have the responsibility.
Sure.
And only we can vote to raise taxes. But when you're dealing with a community solution, and if we're asking the public to weigh in, and our employees to weigh in, and public safety officials to weigh in, and surely the governing board of the school system should have the conviction to tell us what they think, to weigh in as well. Surely you'd have as much conviction as an ordinary citizen would have to weigh in with your view, especially since you're elected and represent the same people we represent.
The people I have talked to, of course, they're concerned about safety, but they said they did not want a tax increase.
And that's what I was going to mention. You know, everybody is concerned about what's going on, and, you know, what will work and what won't work, and there's always these questions. But the big thing is, is that every time you got a problem, you got to have more money to throw money at it. And, you know, the perception out there, and we all know, sitting in our seats, that sometimes that perception's not exactly correct, but that we have a pot of money, and if you've got a priority or a serious situation, you need to look back inside your budget and try to make it work. And that's what they want, I think, in this situation. If this is something that needs to happen, they want us to look back, look at monies that's available, or cuts. And I know that we've worked our tail end off to balance the budget, and there's not a whole lot left. So, you know, I think that, but I think that's what people, if, I think they're comfortable, they'd like to see that, but we need to work within the monies that we have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing the same thing. Everybody I talk to is for safety. I don't know of anybody in Haywood that is not for safety. But how you pay for it's the question. And kind of what I'd like to see, you know, May 20th is, what, 11 days away? We need more time for the school board to look back in their budget. I know they're carrying a pretty good fund balance. We need to look back at our budget. Before we have a tax increase, we need to make sure there's no monies available, and this truly is our top priority. You know, when you have a top priority, you want that more than to do the rest. You know, everything can't be a priority in education. I found out as superintendent, something has to be number one. So if safety's number one, then we need to look at it that way. Other things that are not number one, we might need to cut back, so.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, gentlemen. I'd leave you here, but I'd like this. As this board, we had one safety meeting, and I think two people might have spoke at that meeting that day. Now, the comments I'm getting is more or less going down Mr. Upton's point of view. Have you looked? Has the county looked? Has everybody looked? But what I'd like to ask the boards to do, because we've got some most talented law enforcement people in this room, I'd like the boards to get together and ask you to do assessments of our schools. Jackson County didn't resource off every officer. Buncombe County didn't resource every school. Some they did with security cameras, some they did with security films, some they did with blocking in and out. And I would like to use the talent that we got and the people that are trained to say, Jonathan Creek, you need this. And it may be that we need resource officers and everyone, when we're set and done, but we've not had a true assessment of the school. I'm going to brag on administration here. Sandy Hook happened. They acted as quickly as possible as they could. Law enforcement, thank you for parking your cars in our parking lots. Highway Patrol cruising through, I appreciate that. It's gave our community a sense that you people stepped up when we needed to be stepped up to. And I really do appreciate that. Thank you from a board member, but I'm grateful as a parent, because I have kids in this, and this is very effective to me. But I think I would love to use the talent that's in this room to come up with a good assessment of what do we need. And then let's make the decision. I mean, five resource officers, 10, 11, we pay each other on the back. We did good. But was that the best answer? I don't know that. I'm not a law enforcement person. I trust them to do it and take care of them. And that's just, that's how I feel. You know, that's one opinion of one board member, but we've got a lot of talent, let's use it. I'm sorry, I hate to leave you folks. I've got one of the most important things to do that I do, and that's go to graduation.
We don't have your time.
No, you want to. Seriously, you need, please rebuke me. I'm just kidding. I'd love to. I'm sorry I took so much of your time. I was joking. Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah. That's why, Bob, we had that meeting in January, was to try to get something.
Some kind of assessment.
Some coordination, assessment, a plan. And here we are 10 days out, and I'm hearing you say that the school system doesn't have one.
Well, the one thing that I'm a little disappointed in, I'm going to say this, is that was held without, without this board. You know, I mean, you point said, I don't want to argue, because this, we all care about our kids and we love our kids, and this is the greatest county we've got. But that meeting was Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, was Mr. Francis there at that point in time?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, you know, the rest of the board, I mean, you're coming to this board now asking us to do, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, you know, it relies upon this board as much as it does you to protect our kids. So I do appreciate you, so.
Yeah. Chuck was invited. He was out of town on business.
I'm sorry. Jim, have a great day.
Mr. Chairman, the, correct me if I'm wrong, if the budget that the school board approved and passed and presented to the commissioners was for four SROs, four guidance counselors, and the social workers.
Four social workers.
Four social workers. Four social workers.
Four guidance counselors. I mean, I'm sorry, guidance counselors, yes, you're right.
And from what I understand, that proposal would not require a tax increase, correct?
Plus $910,000.
No, that's eight new employees.
That's eight new employees, we don't have that money. So regardless of what you call the employees, if you've got eight of them, there's going to be a tax increase. If you've got four of them, there's going to be a tax increase, because we don't have the money. So that's why we're here, you know?
This is the third year I've been on the board, and this is the toughest, toughest voting that I've ever had.
We started out, we had, just like everybody else, we had a lot of internal and external pressures that would have been easy to say, hey, we need a tax increase, but that's, we know the public doesn't want that, so we went back and we really worked, our staff worked extremely hard to bring the budget in and still have the school system with the, with the formula that we use to fund. We all wanted to give more for capital outlay, but we at least matched what we were going to do, or we've done the last couple of years. And so there wasn't any money to do anything else with, so now we've got this, and so that's, you know, the only way to fund it was with the, the, the property tax increase. And then, you know, of course, if that's something that, that we are being looked at to provide, then we got to have everybody on board with us, just saying, look, you guys need to raise these property taxes in order for us to do that.
And it's a bad time.
To even be talking about that, I can tell you that right now.
It's not a good time.
And we got, you know, on the security, because I look at it as three-pronged. You got SROs, we need to determine if you need four or 11. You got the capital outlay for fixing the doors where they secure. Oh, and I forgot my third one. Guidance counselors, you know, I'm here to kind of deny, that might be the most important. And it probably is, because I, I've been in high school, middle and elementary, and our kids that are having difficult problems to deal with are probably the ones that's going to come to school and do something. I mean, this, that's happened in a lot of places, so. The school board needs to give us some guidance, so of those three, you know, what's, what's the most important of the three?
Well, and, and, you know, and then on top of this, after this, the April 30th, you know, we, we as a board and our staff kind of went back into our budget and looked at it and tried to come up with a few dollars extra to try to do a few of these things. And I'm going to come back to the school system because as the number one priority, maybe you need to go back inside your budget and look and see what we can do, and see if we can come up with a small amount of money to try to at least start this thing. We can look at, we can look at the grant situation, try to move, and it's going to be a work in progress, so.
Well, you know, with security, you're looking at two, at two, two separate issues with security. One is the student shooter, which is an entirely different dynamic than the intruder shooter. So that's what you have to look at and, and make judgments on.
Don't mean to interrupt here, but to me, just sitting out here listening, it seems like you're putting the school board in a uncomfortable situation where they're having to prioritize. It's almost like you're saying, well, do you want safety or do you want pens and paper? You know, building improvements, locks and, and security cameras and stuff, you know, that should all come out of the school board budget. But I think the burden of providing safety, that should fall on the county. You know, that needs to come, you shouldn't be making the school board ask for, you know, you know, prioritizing safety and, and stuff that they, they need within the schools themselves. I think the burden of safety falls on, on us.
We're elected officials too.
Yeah, we're all elected officials.
It falls on all of us.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I want to reiterate something Mr. Upton said is, when you look at all these incidents and these deranged people, and as these ladies eloquently spoke, those people could have been reached, this doesn't happen anymore. So when you start trying to sort all this out, I don't have a solution, but I can tell you that, that reaching kids that have that type of issue is very important to all of our safety.
Any board member pending, say, Kirk, do you have any you want to say?
I don't know, I pretty much stand by what I said on Monday at the meeting. I'm concerned we haven't even talked about the fact that who's going to control these SROs. I don't necessarily like the fact that the principals control the SROs, and I won't approve SROs without the sheriff and the chief of police being in control of the SROs. I just, I can't do that. I think, and I would be more likely to approve something like that if they were controlled, because it gives those entities the capabilities of having additional men, and plus, they know more about law enforcement and safety than the principals in the school. Now, as far as counselors go, and certainly they don't know about that, there may be some questions about, that I would have about the counselors. I mean, I know that when you say you, you're one counselor and you serve 700 students, and I understand that, but I, I would hope that all 700 students don't need, don't need guidance counseling. I mean, I'm sure that that's counted all of them, and there's some special circumstances to that. And a lot of the factors around counseling involve what's going on at the home. And unfortunately, I guess, as a lot of parents shirk their responsibilities and, and not taking care of their children and being responsible for them, I see that a lot in, in my job, and I don't do it as much as I used to, but when you represent folks at juvenile court, you see just regular criminal court, people live different lifestyles out there than you can ever imagine, and I know that you counselors see that, and the teachers see that as well. And I think we need to probably have the proper counselors or the proper number of counselors there to support that. I don't like the fact that you're just coming in and putting in four SROs or adding new SROs or putting them all in the schools without taking a look and doing a safety assessment. I kind of agree with what Bobby said about that, and, and have that done by the people who know what they're doing. I don't like the fact that they're reacting to an incident that occurred and it gets televised and scares the death out of people. I don't like the fact that, I think that our media, not that that's a terrible event, but there are people dying every day across this country from terrible, horrible events, and we get to see little bits and pieces because our media chooses to, to amplify those. That concerns me. So at this point, I'm not ready to make any kind of decision on this based on what I've heard so far, not and spend additional tax money, because it is important, that there, there are people out there that have a difficult time paying their tax bills, paying their property taxes, and I think we need to be good stewards of the money and just throwing this money after this impertinent, making sure we have SROs without knowing who's going to control them, how, how they're going to, where they're going to be, what time they're going to be certain places, what schools are going to have half the time, and I think Dr. Garrett may have said a few things about that, but I'm, I'm not in a position to, to do anything at this point, based on all those factors.
I'll reiterate one thing I said earlier, I'm not trying to, and I don't think any, any commissioner's trying to put our responsibility on the school board, but if this is going to be a community decision, we all need to step up and say what we think. And if your board supports it, I think it's incumbent upon you to say you support it. That's just the right thing to do for an elected official when we're talking about school safety, we're not talking about landfill matters here. So, you know, that's something I feel strongly about, that we all need to step up and, and get behind something. And from what I'm hearing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody is really comfortable making an ironclad decision this budget cycle, because we've only got 11 days left. Bill, did you have something you want to?
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'd be proud to say a few things on behalf of law enforcement, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
All the law enforcement officers here tonight realize that this is a multifaceted problem, and law enforcement is not the only answer to this problem. But when they come to us and ask for our opinion, just as y'all are doing tonight, as far as we will look at, or we have been tasked to look at, the security and the safety concerns of the individual schools. And we have worked very, very closely with the school system to provide assessments for each and every school. We've done walkthroughs through every single school to see what we can do to, I hate to use this, this term, but to quote, "harden the target," and that's exactly what we're trying to do. If we're the bad guy, what will we do? What would slow us down? What would hinder us from committing a, a horrible act here? And we've done that. We brought the Governor's Crime Commission in from Raleigh on two separate occasions to walk through our schools, to look at what we can do to quote, "harden the target." Again, that's only one side of it. The mental health side of it, huge, absolutely. I can't stand here in this blue suit and solve the problem of mental health or the breakdown of the family or anything else. But when it comes to the security side of it, we have met, and we've met dozens of times with each other and with the school personnel, on what we can do to, to solve this problem or at least make it better, increase the level of safety for our students. And you're exactly right, we don't know if anything will ever occur here, but it's our job as law enforcement to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. You know, I've got an SRT team, a special response team. Is that something that's needed every day? Absolutely not. But when it goes down, are we glad we have it? Absolutely. Are those people, I've talked to the people in Sandy Hook and Newtown, were they, did they expect that to happen in their sleepy town? Absolutely not. An Amish community, whatever. All we can do as law enforcement is try to prepare for the worst, and that's what we think we've done by working with the school system. And is it a, the answer to everything? Absolutely not. The capital improvements, the physical security, physical security of these buildings, we've got to make some changes there to make our kids safer. In regards to the SROs, is that something that's going to solve every problem? Probably not. Is that just a solution that we have as far as one of a number of solutions to increase the safety of our students? Absolutely it is. We put armed security at the courthouse, at our airports, at government buildings. What's the likelihood of something happening there? Very slim. So should we take that all out and say, well, you're kind of on your own, because the likelihood of something happening here is very slim? Nobody likes taxes, nobody likes tax increases more than I do. Should we prioritize what we do? Absolutely. I've got a budget, I have to prioritize what I do. You know, I'm looking at the, the figures that was given to me by Mr. Stamey. I dropped my high school student off, she has an SRO there, I feel good about that. A mile down the road, I dropped my, my six-year-old, and every morning I say a little prayer that she's going to walk out those same doors, because there is nothing there. I've talked to the principal, she says, you've left me up here on this hill all by myself with nothing to protect my students, and I'm going to get a little emotional about it as well, because I do, every morning when I drop that child off. Why are some kids in the county, and we've heard this about, where do our SROs go? Well, we're only going to get four, and we're going to pick the schools, law enforcement's going to pick those schools. How can I do that? How can I say, these children are more important than these children? These children deserve an SRO, these don't. That's the problem that we have, that's the issue with law enforcement. Again, we've been tasked with what can we do to make our schools safer, and these are just some of the ideas. We've got the easy part, we can come up with the ideas, the hard part is paying for it. We understand that, we really do. But when I drop off my six-year-old at kindergarten, and I look at the figure that Mr. Stamey gave me, and it's $17.40 when my house is valued at $200,000, you know what? That's, that's, that's a day at Jukebox Junction for my wife and I. So, that's, and as far as the, the supervision of the SROs, I've got a job description here for our SROs, and I'm, and I can only speak for the Waynesville Police Department, but our SRO, and I think Dr. Nolte, well, he could have backed me up if he's still there. He was principal of Waynesville Middle School for a long time with, with an SRO there. Our SRO, and it's written right here, directly answers to the chief of police or his designee. He has a chain of command. Ms. Milner, you were there as well. He answers to the chief of police, or actually his chain of command there. He follows the policies, procedures, guidelines and training curriculum and requirements that every other police officer does in the Waynesville Police Department. Again, I only speak for, for the Waynesville PD, but that, that has not been an issue, that to my knowledge anyway, as far as some of the schools, I can't speak for all of them, but, and again, I wish I could get up here and wave my magic wand and make these problems go away, but you have tasked law enforcement to provide some answers or at least some ideas that will help to improve safety, and that's what I think we've done. And again, the assessments, I think we worked very, very hard with Dr. Garrett and her staff of doing walkthroughs at every single campus in this county, multiple walkthroughs, brought the Governor's Crime Commission in. We've got lots of good ideas there. Again, it costs money to implement those ideas, we understand that, that, you've got the hard job there. But that's just, as far as the way law enforcement looks at the issue, again, is it, is it a fail-safe? Absolutely not. We thought SROs at middle schools and high schools at one time, that took care of it, because look what the other incidents around the country were, it was at that level. Who'd have dreamed that somebody would have come from the outside into an elementary school and wanted to, to kill six-year-olds? It's unfathomable. But again, we prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Thank you.
Chief.
As a, as the structural improvements that were recommended, have they been completed?
We've only done some of the stuff at the elementary schools. We've put what's called the AI phones in, and the elementary schools are secure right now, all the exterior doors are locked, and then when a person wants to enter the building, the receptionist has to let them in. Doing the middle schools and the high schools is the majority of the $410,000 that we've asked for, because that's a much different animal than what the elementary schools are. And also included in that is more things that need to be done to the elementary schools, primarily ballistic-grade tent around doors that have glass, things like that. So the elementaries aren't at the level that we want them to be, but they're better than what they were.
All those improvements occurred immediately after the incident up northeast. I mean, as fast as we could get them done.
How many doors you had to replace? I guess you replaced all your exterior wooden doors, didn't you?
No, no, we've got about 23 that we've identified right now that need to be replaced, and those are quite expensive, but again, that's within that figure that we've given
The 410.
Into 410. That, that number started out much higher than that, and we've, we've looked at ways to try to trim it down as much as we can, and, and we're working on that, even as, as late as 4 o'clock this afternoon, I was sitting in my office looking at ways that we could continue to be as secure as we possibly can with the least amount of dollars. And we're still working on it, it's, it's evolving every day as to things that we can do a little bit better than what we thought we could do even a week ago. But again, this is one of those problems that, how much money do you want to spend? You know, the, the level of security, what do you want to do? How much do you want to spend to get it as secure as you can? And like everyone has said, unfortunately, we can throw as much money as there is available and still not prevent an occurrence from happening, but taking the advice of law enforcement, what we're trying to do is we are trying to create as many barriers as possible, and that's what we've been told is the best way to address the situation, so that's where we're focusing.
I have a question. The results of the assessments, are those drawn up and presented yet, or?
What we've done is we've had sit-down discussions with the administrators and with the law enforcement, and they have made, like, when we had the bomb threat at Tuscaloosa, we had a debriefing afterwards, and so those were immediate. And then we've done walkthroughs, and then we did our safe schools plans, which we presented back in October, that was part of that.
Okay. But the new assessments, I mean, just the recent visit, was there some recommendations maybe that we could?
Do you need copies of those?
Well, I mean, maybe at the, our board meeting, maybe Monday night, or if there's, if those are available.
Mostly those have just been debriefings, Mr. Francis, with, you know, with those involved?
I know we do have a section on our agenda Monday night for discussion of our budget request.
Okay.
For feedback from our board members to see, prioritize and see where we need to go.
Were you asking if there was like a, like a, a report of the, of the?
Commission?
Yeah, the, the study that was done. Is there a report on Hazelwood School? And, I mean, has somebody written anything up that, that those of us who weren't privy to it could read?
We do not have that. We do not have any written reports, like, from the Governor's Crime Commission, and then the meetings that we have had have been sit-down conversations only, and then, you know, the recommendations that they have made, like the shrubbery and the things like that we have done.
And I have a sort of a version of that. This is maps of all of our schools, and what we do is we sit down and we look at these maps and see where do we need to do what particular type of security, and?
We probably want to keep that fairly confidential, I would think.
Right.
I had, kept running through my mind, I said, well, let's, let's look at it, but I think it's something you wouldn't want to just?
That you don't make that public.
Correct. And I maybe, maybe though we could do it some way legally that we could see it in a public, because we are elected officials trying to protect our kids. If we can legally do that, I'd like to have at least a little. we can legally do that, I'd like to have at least a look at the information.
Okay, now that was in that big orange book that I presented back here. So I'll make that available again.
Great.
Following up on what Chief Hollins had said, I was, you know, we've gotten some, I've gotten a couple of emails today, actually. They were talking about, you know, stay within your budget, and I understand that. I expect that, you know, stay within your budget look and everything. But I was asking a friend of mine, and he's a Republican, so.
Already making excuses.
I asked a friend of mine, you know, and I said, "You know, what do you think about this?" I said, I explained to him what we were trying to do, and he's had two kids go through the school system, and he said, and I said, he said, "What will it cost?" And I said, "Well, average family, probably about 20 bucks." And he said, "As many crazy people as there are out there for 20 bucks?" He said, "Yeah, I'll pay that." So, you know, we're kind of getting it from both, both ways. But, you know, some people understand the cost, because the cost is what, you know, we're all debating up here, and we're all afraid of, I guess. But the cost is what, you know, is what it's going to take if, if we do the SROs. But if something happens, it's on our watch. You know, we're the ones, we're the ones that's with responsibility. So, so I hope we really look at this closely. And like I say, I'm listening to the public, I want to get as much, and I ask people as much as I can, you know, "What do you think about it?" And, and just to find out what, what everybody's saying. But it surprised me what, when, what Tuscaloosa told me today, so I thought I'd throw it out there.
Okay. Well, you know, and I've, I've heard a couple of off-the-cuff comments about having volunteers be armed in schools, or teachers be armed. That's, of all the remedies I can think of, that's absolutely the worst.
He got that for me.
If you've ever been in a firefighter in the military, you know that, and...
And Mark understands, and I, I've asked him, and he's, you know, he's, he's the expert on that. And, because I thought, well, just, you know, what if the state let teachers be armed? And so he, so you can hear the, the principal over here, she's, she's pretty adamant about not doing it.
No, you don't, you don't want that.
But I didn't understand that, you know, it, it takes training when you're in, in these type of situations. And I'm glad Mark straightened me out on that.
It takes training, and it takes experience, and that still does not guarantee an outcome. You can have a firefight where 100, 200 rounds are fired, and maybe only one or two hit their target. That's how, that's how chaotic it is at a situation like that. And you don't need untrained, inexperienced nurturers having firearms in a room full of children. I don't mean that I don't trust your opinion, but if you tend to arm yourself, let me know, so I can be elsewhere.
I think teachers should teach, they don't need to be police officers.
They got enough on them already. Teachers have got way too much on them. You know, getting back to the funding question, something I have a question in my mind about is, as a school board, we seem to, mainly out of Raleigh, I'm not going to say local level, I, I think that our local relationship we've had with the county commissioners has been excellent. We have a funding form, we know well in advance what's normally going to be expected, and, and we, we put in our requests for additional funding in, in the capital area. And I feel like it's, it's a very secure feeling to know where our budget's going to be locally. The problem we've had a lot of times has been out of Raleigh, where now there's truly the school buildings themselves, maintenance, capital improvements are being funded by gamblers in North Carolina, not taxpayers. The lottery is paying for the upkeep of our schools now, and they basically in Raleigh have taken away other sources of funding that we used to enjoy. And I remember how the lottery was sold, was that we weren't going to do what they're doing with it now. And, and then we've seen that money shrink also. It used to be upwards of 1.2 million a year, something such as that. Now it's been diverted down to probably 400,000, 450, somewhere in that range. So it's just discouraging for us as a board to sit here and, and try to maintain our buildings. And I know I'm getting off subject, but there's a purpose in this. And what I'm getting to is, is that if we do want to do the, the tax increase, I want to know that that's where the funds are going to be expended, because we've had a history in Raleigh, I'm not saying on a local level, that it, it comes here, then it goes over here, then it goes over here, and then after about three or four years, it's gone away. And this is going to be a Mr. Taxpayer, Ms. Taxpayer, this is going to be recurring expense every single year that we're going to see in our budget. And I think that, that would be something that would be, in my mind, to know where the money's going to go, and how it's going to be, come back to us. Because I know we, no matter what our funding source, we come through the county commission.
Recurring expenses, you know, can't really come from a fund balance, or just a pot of money that's sitting there. I understand that. I think everybody that works with budgets know that if you take, continue to take something out of something, it'll eventually be dry. So there needs to be a revenue stream. But fund balances exist in, in large part to cover expenses that are non-recurring. You know, if special capital needs, how do you view that, Chuck? I mean, I, I know, you know, we, we have two separate and distinct things here we're talking about. One is personnel costs, and one is capital to accomplish the things that, you know, the security survey recommend, and with hardware, and doors, and locks, and entry barriers, and that kind of thing, which will largely be one-time.
Correct.
There'll be some ma, maintenance, I'm sure, and some repair occasionally, but largely one-time expenses. Do you have any thoughts on that, Chuck?
Well, I think that, you know, one-time expenditures, we could look maybe at our budget, see if there's any way we could try to help in that capital area, whether it be the fund balance, which, a lot of it's committed. We do have a fund balance, and a large portion of it is budgeted for next year's expenditures to keep current levels going. After that, unfortunately, it'll be gone. There is some money set aside for guarantee of the Pisgah project, to make sure that we have the funds available to pay for that, in case the sales tax revenue doesn't cover that. And perhaps, you know, given...
Lottery proceeds.
And lottery proceeds, we're pretty well designated for what we've got going now, so.
Well, you've designated the lottery proceeds for Pisgah High, right, too?
Yes, the payments, that's correct. Of course, and thereof, I don't know that...
About $190,000 a year, I think, isn't it, Julie? Something like that. And...
You know, we can address that with our board, again, Monday night, and take a look and see what we can do, you know, on our side as well.
Okay. Did you let us know?
Sure.
Tuesday?
Sure.
Have Ann call Marty and whatever that decision is? That'd be appreciated. I think that's a step, a good step in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, I was just thinking about our 15 schools, and I'm sure the board has looked at it. Each school has a unique location inherent to having good security. I was, I mean, I was principal out at Meadowbrook, and nobody ever comes out there, can't find it. I mean, I'm telling you the truth. And the teachers, I found out in elementary, the teachers have the kids in the classroom all day, they're not outside unless the teacher's outside. So, most of our nine elementary schools, the kids are under one roof. Now, you get to your two high schools, you got a problem. And, and when I was superintendent, we talked about connecting the buildings with a corridor to make it safer. So, that's going to be the hard area, the two high schools. And Waynesville Middle, same thing. Kids move around more. You know, anytime you move around more with kids, Lynn, you know, you have problems. So, Kent Middle, I think most of the kids are under one roof. Is that, it might be two buildings there at Kent Middle.
There's a couple buildings.
So their needs, their needs will be different. We've got schools that are close to the police departments. I'm sure Central High, Central Elementary is probably two blocks away. But again, you couldn't get there built fast enough if something was going on in the building. So, I mean, I understand.
And we've talked about that, and we, we kind of pride ourselves, and we're in a much better scenario than, say, the sheriff's office for River Bend, or some of these other schools are far out. You know, we pride ourselves on a three-minute response time anywhere. In three minutes, a lot of carnage is taking place. That's, you know, and we could be sitting out front, or we may be at the other end of town, you never know.
I guess the bottom line is, my point is, and I found out when I moved to Haverhill County, if you spend money one place, you almost have to spend it another. But we're going to have to look at each school, and in this situation, to see what each school needs, and not, you know, we spending this much at Tuscaloosa and this much at Pisgah. I mean, I, I went through that battle for 22 years, and I think it still goes on a little bit, doesn't it? If I remember, when Tuscaloosa got a load of rocks, I wanted a load down at Pisgah.
But we're going to have to look at each school, see their needs, and do what we need to do to make them safe. I'm talking about people getting into the buildings.
Bill, is your information there still is that Tuscaloosa, Pisgah rivalry?
I thought maybe...
I think they play in a certain...
You're exactly right. If it's good for one school, it's good for the other school. You're exactly right. And when it's not, you, your phone lights up.
And I hearing that the first priority, if you have to choose, one thing to do first is physical barriers?
I think that's what we've tried to work on to this point, is physical barriers. That's, that's what we've been able to do, right, Tracy?
That is...
Fastest thing.
That is what everyone in law enforcement, from Governor's Crime Commission, that was their very first objective, was to create barriers.
Bill, I know you're kind of the spokesman, is that the consensus of your group as well?
Since, since we started meeting, you know, looking at the threat coming from the outside in, that, that is definitely the priority as far as, or one of the priorities anyway, as far as creating the single access point, that kind of thing, and creating those interior doors, the, fortifying the glass on the, on the ground floor all the way around, that kind of thing, to create that increased safety level, from preventing an intruder from getting in in the first place.
And again, the money that we've asked for...
The 410,000 doesn't, doesn't secure the glass at the ground level anywhere. It, it does secure the glass around doors.
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Lot of the study and decide.
Well, it's been, you know, I think candor's a good thing, and, and I think communication's a good thing. So, as I understand it, what we're left with right now is that the school board, Monday night, will discuss physical barrier funding, and, and Dr. Garrett will let Marty know the results of that. And then we have the, do we have a work session between now and the 20th?
No.
We'll have, that may be something we need to do. We'll talk about that.
Are we going to be privy to the reports or whatever? I know you don't have much in writing. But are we going to be privy to any of that information? I mean, I would like, I think that's important for us to have.
I can make that note, too.
Yeah, I don't know, or you may know whether or not that would be...
Meeting topic?
I have a good idea, but find some statute, put it over.
Since it's...
Sure, we can find some.
Yeah. So we wouldn't share it with the public, is what I'm trying to get, get at here, whether we just, because for obvious reasons, you don't want to expose your weakest flanks.
Surely generalizations could work, so we could justify what we're trying to do.
Francis, on that, you know, like, the report that they're asking for, is, you know, is the priority at Bethel, is it an SRO, or is it facilities? Or is it, you know, for the council, and maybe prioritize it that way would be the simplest? And then that way, the, you know, the confidentiality would not be out. And not that we don't trust our county commissioners, because we do.
Well, I would rather, I prefer that the schools be physically safe first, before you start putting people out there. I mean, I just think that that makes good sense, and plus, it's something that doesn't carry on year after year after year, it's capital expenditure. And you need to have that done. And certainly in the elementary schools, you need to, I think the primary focus there is to keep people out. I don't know the statistics, but I would say that there's not a whole lot of seven-year-olds going in shooting other people with guns, or 11-year-olds. There may be, I don't know. I mean, somebody could pull the statistics on that and show me and change my mind, but I would expect that that's not the case. I would expect you need to start worrying about that in the middle schools and the high schools, where I think you got the SROs, except for a couple of overlaps. And that's what Bill was talking about. You know, my kid doesn't have one, but that kid has one. So, but I, I really think that your infrastructure improvements for safety are, are important, and I'd like to see that those things get done. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I agree with that. One thing I would like to mention, if, you know, in some of the initial plans for SROs, being assigned half-day at one school, moving them all around, I really don't think that is, I think that's basically a waste of money. I'll be honest with you, because if you're, if you're not there all the time, it's like you're never there. And you spend your time on the road more than you spend it in a school if you're half-day at one place and half-day at another. I really don't think that's, but I'll leave it to Bill and his group. Do you concur with that, or do you...
That's what we've talked about, as far as, you know, the way it was broken down to be each SRO basically responsible for three schools each. And, you know, if, if somebody's planning something, when's the car leave? And that's when you do something there. I mean, just a, a traveling SRO, as far as teaching dare and things like that are fine. But as far as providing physical, physical security at the school, that's not the best plan.
Right.
But I think that takes a calculated event. I mean, we have to have someone who's, who's calculating to do that. But you can't tell me it's not a deterrent. I mean, it's a deterrent to me, when I take Foster to high school every day, when I see two deputies up there. I mean, and, you know, I'll drive up, and there's one there, and there's one there. And I don't know which days they're going to be there, but I guarantee I'm wearing my Dad Jim seatbelt. I mean, you know, it's, it's in my mind that that's, that they're there. And, and when I drive back through, and I'm going to work, and I go by Junaluska Elementary, I know, there might be one right there, too. He's always sitting there. So, to me, it's a deterrent. It certainly is not going to stop that calculated person. There's no, there's no question about that. But I think the presence, and, and I believe that Dr. Garrett has allowed for the officers to have lunch at all the schools, they're paid, I mean, they don't even have to pay for their lunch. And I would hope that some of those officers are taking advantage of that. I mean, to me, and even to a kid who's thinking about, "I'm going to do something crazy," if they see that officer in one day, and not the next, but they see him the next day, I mean, it, it helps. I mean, and you have to just, you know, combine all of these factors together to try to deter as many things as you know or may know, or reasonably calculate could happen. And, I mean, yeah, you're preventing something you don't know that could happen, but it, it possibly could. I'm not saying that it can.
I just post the presence of law enforcement does have a deterrent effect on all of us, guilty, guilty conscience or not.
We sell empty patrol car on the road. We slow down.
Well, yeah, yeah. And that's why filling out reports and that kind of thing in school parking lots, you got to do it somewhere. And we appreciate you, you know, doing that for us. That's for the community, that's very much appreciated.
Are there any, I guess to the law enforcement, or maybe the administration, are there any schools that have SROs that teach, where it could be, they could be a teacher? Is that, that probably wouldn't do, I mean?
No, but I try to have Officer Sweter on a routine basis to go into these classrooms, sit down with these students. If he's not going over anything but criminal law that might aid them, or might get them in the right direction, that is a positive. So I encourage him, when he has time, to be able to do so. And, you know, he, he does spend some time in the classroom, for sure. And that's, that's the way I want it done, so.
I just thought if we had positions for part-time teachers, could there be SROs? You know, could it be trained both ways? That's what I was, that's what I'm, going with what I'm thinking about, so. I don't know if you ever, ever thought about that. Maybe it's not even possible. Maybe the SRO is busy all the time, can't have an hour or two to teach. And I don't know how many, I don't know, in the elementary school, what teachers, what their times are. Yeah, I'm sure y'all are pretty much busy to the heel.
Yeah, you have two certifications you got to deal with, one law enforcement, one teaching, and then you got class planning and...
Okay, okay. Just thinking, you know, it'd be good to be had somebody armed there, so.
Well, I don't know that we've resolved a lot. I think we have a, a path forward of sorts. We'll know more about that Monday night. And, and it may be necessary for our board to have another work session prior to the budget being presented. Again, just, I guess we'll just have to gauge what the public thinks, and what we think, and what we've heard tonight. I'm encouraged that, that our law enforcement community has visited every school and made... specific recommendations. I think that's, that's important. The issue of SROs reporting to the sheriff or their chief, Dr. Garrett, does that, or Chuck, does that cause any heartburn for you?
No, because I think it was addressed, because, you know, that's what we have done in the past, anyway. I mean, the super, I mean, the principal, you know, does assignments and does the daily routine, but these are contracted positions to the sheriffs or the different police departments.
I think there are some places where they do report more to the principal than the sheriff, as I understand it.
I think the county and Waynesville have more control than the sheriff does.
Or the sheriff did, I'll put it that way.
The sheriff did.
I'd like to clarify, when Ms. Milner was at Waynesville Middle, I answered to Mrs. Milner, but the SRO answered to me.
When I was school board chairman, I answered to Ms. Milner. But in any event, that's no issue with you.
No, that's not an issue.
Okay, all right.
We discussed that, and it's not a stem and watt for that.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?